It's really surprising.
Doris, I have a person on our team in the Treasurer's Office and she has herself a princess room, and I think that sounds better.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, uh-oh. Uh-oh.
I'm no princess.
That reminds me of that insurance commercial. And I burned down my she shed.
Burned down my she shed.
Nobody burned down your she shed.
And they're having a lot of fun.
There's Jim.
Even though I've seen that commercial a thousand times, I laugh at it every time.
It's good, yep. That and the gummy bears, the people around the boardroom table with the gummy bears, the adults. The tough like kids.
Does anyone know what those commercials are for?
Gummy bears.
Is it bears or balls? I get confused.
Ay, ay, ay.
Hey, there's John.
He's muted too. He is muted.
Okay. The June 16th, 2020 meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois called to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Alderman Redpath, here. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. This week, we hit the point of unfortunate tragic point of the coronavirus pandemic where actually over 115,000 people had died, which, you know, if you, it equates to over the Springfield's population. So with that, I'd ask that everybody pause for a moment of silence to remember those, not only reach that tragic demise, but also the families that have been impacted and those that have been impacted by this terrible illness. Thank you. And it's a reminder, it's, you know, other states as they're opening up, we're heading into Phase Four within the next week or two. And so it's important that we always continue to remind others of the importance of the social distancing, making sure we wear face coverings when we're in six feet or in public places of others, and then also keep, you know, washing our hands because right now there's no vaccination. And that's the importance of the social distancing, and that's going to be for the remainder of the year. So as Springfield and Illinois moves forward in that fashion, it's incumbent upon all of us to keep that in mind so we don't have the re-escalation that other states have been experiencing. So thank you very much. Now we'll go into the zoning portion of our meeting. The first item on the agenda is document number 2020-023 for the property located at 1112 East Enos. Petitioner is Avery Properties and Management. Present zoning classifications S1 Neighborhood and Commercial and Office District, Section 155.030. Requested zoning relief of variance of Section 155.157, discontinuance of use to remodel a vacant single-family residence permitting a continued use of the property as a non-conforming single-family residence located on the first floor in an S1 Neighborhood Office Commercial District. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Second. Been moved by Alderman Gregory to approve the Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation and seconded by Alderman Donlin. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
You're muted, Doris. Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes.
Mayor Langfelder.
Yes.
Eleven yeses and no nos.
The zoning request passes. Eleven oh. Next item on the agenda is document number 2020-024 for the property located at 1,000 West Vine Street. Petitioner is William C. Harvey. Present zoning classification R1 Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief of variance of Section 155.061, basic yard requirements to construct in addition with an attached garage to the west side of the existing dwelling structure to within 10 feet of the rear yard and eight feet, nine inches from the north yard setback while tearing down the existing detached garage. The existing structure has an existing east front yard setback of approximately 26 feet, 10 inches, and petitioner seeks to allow this setback of 26 feet and 10 inches instead of the required 30 feet as required for the front yard setback. Sangamon County, Springfield, Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the petition as filed.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McMiniman to accept the petition as filed and seconded by Alderman Hanauer. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion will vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes.
Mayor Langfelder.
Yes.
Eleven yeses and no nos.
The zoning request passes. This time, the chair will recognize Treasurer Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of May had a beginning balance of $16,925,94. We took in total receipts of $8,375,986. We had total disbursements in the month of May of $11,792,6, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of May of $13,509,74. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, or say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We do not have any presentations tonight. The chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the June 2nd, 2020 regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
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 Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading, first reading of ordinances in the record of the City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Two twenty-nine, I want a vote present.
Okay.
Noted.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda and the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Two twenty-nine, I'm both present.
Okay, two twenty-nine.
Noted.
Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on the final passage.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Two twenty-nine.
Third time's a charm.
Three times.
Noted, sir. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Mayor Langfelder.
Aye.
Eleven ayes and no nays. Consent agenda passes. Agenda number 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-276, 2019-430, 220-049, 220-067, 220-134, 220-153, 220-158, 220-159, 220-160, 220, or 2020, rather, I should be saying 2020 on all those for the record, 2020-161, 2020-162, 2020-163, 2020-164, 2020-181, 2020-195, 2020-207, and 2020-231 remain tabled or in committee. Is there any motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we pull 2020, 158 through 2020, 164 for council consideration. Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to move out of committee, 2020-158 through 2020-164, and these all pertain to the Housing Council Advisory Council appointments. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I think it's important that we either vote these up or vote them down. Everybody has their own opinions on how we want to proceed on this, and let's just, if you don't want to vote for them, don't vote for them. If you do, let's do, let's get this moving.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Yes, we have two ordinances on first reading that deal with how we're going to move forward with boards and commissions, so I think those should be considered before we vote on these. One is the requirement to live in the city of Springfield, and the other is the requirement that anyone, any one person only serves on one board or commission. So I think those two need to be voted on and decided by the council before we move forward with any future appointments.
I think we can each individually take those proposed ordinances into consideration as we make our vote to, tonight, on these nominations. If there's been a motion and a second to place, Alderman Redpath, did you make a motion to place these ordinances on debate agenda? I said for consideration, but they can be on the debate agenda. I'll second that motion for debate agenda, and I suppose unless there's more discussion, we can vote on that, on the motion.
Any other discussion?
I understand Alderman DeSento's concerns, and I agree with her, by the way. That's, 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 I wish they would have been in front of us before that. I can tell you that there's a couple of people on here I'm not voting for, but there's people on here that I will, and some of them are first, are only going to be on one committee, and they do live in the city, so I think we owe them a vote.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I got a question.
Alderman Hanauer.
So if we vote them, let's just say, so if someone gets voted down, can they be, can they be reappointed after the, the new, the new ordinances are in effect, or are they, they out? How does that work?
That's why we should wait.
The, if you're asking if an appointment is not affirmed, you know, by City Council, is that person eligible to be nominated again for a position? The answer is yes.
Because I'm, I'm kind of apt to wait, but, but it's whatever.
Any other discussion? Alderman Donlin.
Just, I know some of, a couple of the aldermen in particular had some concerns about the process and the names and the passes. Has there been any dialogue since we last met? Whether it was, I think it was last week, discussed it. Has there been any conversation?
As far as?
Like between you or your staff and, and I think there were two aldermen in particular that had some issues.
Yeah, the one issue that was brought up was with regards to the renter, and then recently over the appointments that came that resurfaced, or I guess brought, was brought up at the last council meeting with regards to the, either the residency and with regards of residency. Just to clarify for myself, I always felt that, and the reason you have residency for employees is because their salaries, well, actually their retirement or their pensions are paid 100% from our property taxes. Unlike a volunteer, you know, they're volunteering their time, and so I view that as a different situation, but I understand the views of Alderwoman Turner brought it up, and we did present a, one of the ordinances that was, that is being considered on first reading tonight. The other one with two committees, I know there's one in particular, I think there's value of having someone serve on two committees that have the background associated with zoning. And so from that standpoint, what we're trying to do is get people that will hit the ground running with regards to vacated properties. You know, we struggled with that for a long period of time, as well as development in the TIFs, and that's why, you know, the ones that I have pointed, I think they're strong individuals that should be considered with regards to my original bringing them forward and outlining in numerous emails, things of that nature.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Alderwoman Turner, then Alderman Redpath.
Well, you really answered, I was going to answer Alderman Donlin's question. So I did bring forward the, the ordinance that says that members of boards and commissions must reside within the city, and, and I will point out that Mayor Langfelder joined me as a co-sponsor of that ordinance, as well as Alderman McMiniman. And I know that we received, Bonnie forwarded, I think five or six letters of support today for, from individuals for one of the candidates, and I would just say that I appreciate her forwarding those letters, but we also received, or at least I received, a number of, of letters, texts, and emails supporting the fact that it's, it's a bit absurd for a non-city resident to be formulating policy for city residents. And that's basically what boards and commissions do. They formulate policy. So I just think that city policies that residents are going to be governed by should be formulated by city residents. And I do support Alderwoman Conley and Alderwoman DeSento in their thought that an individual should only serve on one board or commission. I think that there are many people in Springfield that are interested in volunteering and serving the city of Springfield through memberships on boards and commissions. I know I get inquiries all the time from people that are interested in serving on either city or county boards and commissions. So the people are out there. I think that one of the problems that I have been harping on, and I harped on this all the time when I was on the county board, is that if we are ever going to change the dynamic of city government, we have to enlarge our circle of the people that we reach out to. We have to include many more people in the conversation. We have to invite many more people to the table. If we continue to just listen to the same old voices, and if we continue to just go to the usual suspects, so to speak, we're going to hear, hear the same thing, and, and we're just going to be, you know, kind of running in place. So I think that we have a responsibility to enlarge our circle and invite differing diverse voices to the table and not just keep, you know, rounding up the usual suspects.
Alderman Redpath.
Obviously, there's still some concern by the majority. So I, my motion is to bring it off the table for consideration. I think that's probably appropriate for us to vote for, and then majority will rule if we go any further with it to the debate agenda or not. So with that, I would call the question for the consideration to bring it off the table.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2020-152, an ordinance accepting the proposal submitted by Knight EA Inc. for design engineering comprised of plans, specifications, and estimates for intersections, improvements, and signal design of Koki Mill at Greenbrier in an amount not to exceed $56,400 for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-152 on final passage.
So moved.
What? Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I think we have an amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So amendment number one, and I'll just read this. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal before us, and what is the change on the amendment?
Sir, it is a technical correction on the account number that should be referenced in the ordinance. So it is a technical change as to the, to set forth the proper account number. It's in red on the attachment. No other changes.
In section two.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion on the amendment?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Any discussion on the ordinance as amended? All those in favor of the motion, vote, vote on the ordinance as amended. Vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes.
Ten yeses and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. The motion carries as amended. Next item on the agenda is number two, or 2020-227, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement for the city of Springfield and Rodney J. Heron and John O. Watson for a property located at Panther Creek Drive. The chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the City Council to hold a public hearing regarding this annexation agreement.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? The public hearing is now open. Or I'm sorry, all in favor of the public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to address the council regarding this annexation agreement? I don't know if anybody's zoomed in to, do we know? Tom Chee, is there anybody in the waiting room that wanted to speak to the annexation? I'll take that as a no. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council.
I'm sorry, there is a, excuse me. No, I don't have anybody sign up for, no, not this one.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-227 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. All those opposed vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes.
Ten yeses and no nays, Mayor.
And I vote yes as well.
I'm sorry.
For that.
Mayor, like number eleven.
Thank you. The ordinance passes eleven, voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2020-228, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located on Panther Creek Drive. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-228 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The vote, or the clerk will now call the.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Langfelder.
Yes.
Eleven yeses and no nays, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, a point of order. What did we do with the ordinances with the nominations to the Housing Council? I thought we called the question.
I'm sorry, skipped right over those.
Okay, all right, so we're going to get back to them.
We do have the ordinance coming up, so.
Okay, that's okay.
We'll just take it at that time if that's all right.
That's fine.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number 2020-230, an ordinance approving the appointing of Lakeisha K. Purchase to the Springfield Economic Development Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-230 on final passage.
Point of order.
Yes, Alderman Redpath.
Shouldn't we, if we're going to hold all of them, hold them all till the appointments are, until we come, get through with those two ordinances that we're concerned with?
Yeah, this one's a different committee.
It's still somebody being appointed to committee. That one, and there's another one on 235. It's not that I'm opposed to the people. I just think if we're going to do it, we ought to hold them all.
Okay. Well, we can do that.
I'm further confused. I, I thought we were going to, the motion was to pull them off the held-in committee and put them on for a vote tonight. I understand, I understand your confusion. That was, what I said is, we, my motion was to pull them off the floor for consideration, and I thought we were going to vote on that also, and, and I, I don't think that the votes were there to pass it, to get it off the floor, so that's, I think we just moved on. But I think we do need a vote on that, Mayor, just to clarify.
Right. We'll do them all together? Is that what you want to do?
No, my motion on the first ones was to bring it off the, off, out of the, out of committee for consideration.
Right.
We never did vote on that, so that, that's got to be, that's got to be a vote that has to take place, because I don't, I think the majority don't want to bring them out of committee. I'm just guessing.
Yeah, we voted to bring them out of committee.
No, we voted.
No, we didn't. No, we didn't.
Right.
Call the question, Mayor.
voted on the call and the question.
Okay, now I'm confused.
Mayor, what, what happened was Alderman Red, if you don't mind, sir?
So we'll go ahead and.
I was going to say, if you would like to, just, just so the record is clear, if you would like to make a motion now to remove those items 158 through 163 and place them on the debate agenda, then you would have a vote on whether or not to.
Exactly, and that's what we didn't do, so we have to do that right now, so.
So if someone makes a motion in a second.
The motion is to remove them for a committee, to put them on the debate agenda, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I seconded that before. I'm going to do it again. We, we just got kind of tied up there. All right.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
No. No.
We'll do a roll call.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Nay.
Alderwoman Turner.
No.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
No.
Alderwoman DeSento.
No.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
No.
Three yeses, seven noes, mayor.
So back to the question on 230 now, mayor. I think that we, if we're going to hold all of them, we should hold all of them until we get through with those two ordinances. If that's, that's probably more appropriate action.
With that, I make the motion, we send that back to committee?
Second that.
And the reason for this?
To wait, if we're going to, if we're going to do it, we better, we need to do it for the, the two ordinances that are coming up to make, keep everybody on the same playing field.
And I know they're on the same committee, mayor, but they, they are appointments and they're going to be affected by the new rules.
Well, yeah, but this one wouldn't be impacted at all because she's stepping off the Historic Sites Commission and this would be the new committee that she'd serve on. Alderman McMenamin.
You know, I, I think we're really doing a disservice to our volunteers that wish to serve on our committees. They've been held and held and held. Some of these nominee, nominees live in our city and only would be serving on one commission or board. I think we should go through these one by one like Alderman Redpath first suggested, and those that we can approve, we approve. If someone's got an objection to any of them, they can state their objection. We have to, you know, we can't treat people like this that get nominated where they get passed over and passed over. Just a disservice to our volunteers. So I agree with Alderman Redpath. What we should have done is vote on those that we can vote on.
You know, and my point was to do that, but you know, majority rules and the majority of the council does not want to do that, Joe. So we have, I think it's appropriate to, to go on with the two new ordinances that are coming. But I think my, my whole idea is that if we're going to hold those, we need to hold all appointments until we get through those two ordinances. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Alderman Gregory.
Yes, I do, I do think holding, holding these would be appropriate until we, until we pass the other two ordinances as, as it will affect some on the, on the housing policy. Of course, these two that are coming up, they, they, they meet and everything, but it would be appropriate to pass that first and then come back and, and get everybody approved or denied, get everything in place. I, I, you know, I, I get it, Alderman McMenamin and, but we're such, we're, we're in such a delicate space with, with the change of our city. We got to take our time with this. And, and I think those people who are waiting on appointments or not appointments, we don't want it done right and, and, and want to come into something that, that is going to truly move our, our, our city forward. Not that we've done whatever type of job, but, but we know we, we have some improvements to make. So you know, I'm, I'm, I'm fully with getting it all set and, and, and then we'll come back to these appointments and you know, a little bit of time won't hurt that. We want to get this right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I guess the one thing I'd point out is we've had this discussion for probably months now and hopefully this is the last hurdle we have to make because there's renters, nobody brought up some of the other objections and then they progressed. So we just hope that this will be the last hurdle that we have to go through because we are in the middle of pandemic. And so with regards to development, everybody knows the importance of that. There are grant funds that are coming to fruition and it's important that we move forward in that proactive measure. And you know, waiting a couple of weeks, you know, we waited a couple of months, so I'm not sure if that will matter much, but hopefully this is the last hurdle. If there's any other objections, please submit them in writing to Jeanette or myself so we can move forward and put the committees in place once and for all. So we would appreciate that.
Mayor, with, with all due respect, there, we have boards and commissions that haven't met in a year. There's no sense of urgency right now. We're, let's do this right.
No, we are doing it right. And so this is a very important one, as you know, economic development. The other one's a housing committee. And I would implore all Aldermen, and I think some of you have stated to me how difficult it is to get individuals to volunteer because it is demanding and especially now with the coronavirus, people are afraid to go out. I mean, that's one of the other variables that we have to deal with. So it'd be important that we do get volunteers. We want that broad perspective as Alderwoman Turner had said. So it's incumbent upon all of us to help in that effort. So we appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
I'd just like to further comment that we're kind of opening up a can of worms when we talk about double nominations. For example, some of our Aldermen, myself included, by virtue of intergovernmental agreements and city code, we serve on this council and we serve, let's say, on the zoning commission or we serve on the health, county health department. And there's other double representations there. So I think we have to think this through. I think we don't want to set up a double standard. Oh, Aldermen can serve on two, but our citizens that might have great expertise cannot. I think it really, and we're, I'm starting to debate already one of the ordinances that we're going to talk about in two weeks. By the way, we don't meet next week. So the first vote on these nominees will be now three weeks again from today. And I think you invited the nominees to be present for this meeting or available. So again, I, I think we're treating our nominees badly here. And as far as getting things right, we have to get things right with our nominees too. So I think the, the ordinances are not, you know, clear cut on their face as far as the, the ordinances that we're talking about. One that would restrict nominees to residency, I think that one makes a lot of sense. But I think the other one needs a careful review for reasons stated that our intergovernmental agreements actually mandate double representation. So let's not sit about that.
Totally agree.
Alderwoman Turner.
I'm mute. All right. I think, I think Alderman McMenamin is a little confused. No city council member serves on two city boards or commissions. I think he's probably referencing myself. I serve as a member of the Springfield City Council and I serve as a member of the Sangamon County Board of Health. So I serve on a city council and I serve on a county board of health. But no other person serves on two city boards and commissions. And, and I, I just think that, again, we, we live in a city of over 100,000 people and we really need to have diverse voices at, at the table. And if you look at, and this predates Mayor Langfelter. I, I don't, this, I'm not, this is not, this is not anything shining a light on Mayor Langfelter and his appointments. This predates Mayor Langfelter. But if you go back, if you go back 10, 10 years and look at the list of people who serve on boards and commissions, I guarantee you that it's very limited with regard to diversity, diversity with regard to age, race, gender, geographic area of residency. It's, it's very limited. And we, again, we do ourselves, as well as our city, a disservice if we don't expand the voices that are, and that are at these tables.
Mr. Mayor, I got to, you know, I completely agree that we want broad representation. We want to get as many qualified persons to serve as, as, as possible. But I don't like to be called confused. I, I think that's kind of a personal comment. I think I read the proposed ordinance and it's not specific to county or city or joint representation. It simply says no person can serve as a member on more than one board, commission, or council at any one time. Now, maybe that language will get clarified down the road, but I did read the proposed ordinance and I do know what I'm talking about and I don't like to be called confused in public.
But why would, but you are confused because why would the city council have a, a city ordinance talking about appointing people to a Sangamon County board? That doesn't make any sense. I mean, I know you want to buttress your, your opinion and your, and your, you know, what you're, and your argument, but it doesn't make any sense that we would have an ordinance that says, no, we're not going to appoint someone to a Sangamon County board. We, we can't do that.
I stand by what I said.
Me too.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of sending the ordinance number 2020-230 back to committees, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion passes. Next item on the agenda is number 2020-232, an ordinance amending chapter 39, section 39.12, chapter 98, section 98.999, chapter 170.10.999, and section 170.17.399 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to the code of violations and penalty. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2020-232 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, mayor.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. I, after discussion with Mr. Zirkel, there's, there's really no amendments that I'm proposing for this. But there was one talk, there was talk last week about a potential of moving it from 12 months to 24 months. I didn't, I was going to kind of leave it up to the council if they feel that's necessary or if we want to go with this for now. This is, I want to stress that hopefully this is in, this is the beginning of, of the changes to help add, add additional enforcement teeth, I, I call it teeth, you know, to, to help our, our inspectors. And the idea of stopping people from getting out of, out of fines because they wait 30 days or right before, right before the admin court to, to abate it. It's not fair to the neighbors and hopefully we can get this, you know, we've got other issues with, that we need to, to work on as well, but this is a kind of a first step. And I know Alderwoman Conley is, is looking at some other things and you know, there's some things, you know, as, as this progresses, we, we may have to tweak it. But I didn't know what people thought from the 12 month or 24 month. I'm, I'm happy with leaving it as it is and let's, let's give it a, some time and if, if we have to address it later, we can.
Alderman Redpath.
Alderman Hanauer, this is a good ordinance and I know the majority of the council sponsors it, but there's one provision that I'm concerned with is I have habitual offenders now on a list. And Darrell, maybe you can address this, but I have habitual offenders on the list as some of the other Aldermen do. Are we starting this today or when it's approved or is it going to be, are we going to go? Because, because we have a track record of habitual problems and that takes, that gives them a brand new fresh start, which means they should be on level two or level three already. And some of them are pretty aggressive, so.
That would be former councils. Very briefly, the, whenever you're dealing with fines, it's going to be prospective only. You cannot make a fine retroactive. So this would go forward with referrals after the effective date of the ordinance. As Alderman Hanauer mentioned, this is a, this is a significant sea change because historically the city has pursued compliance, you know, which is why the original provisions in the city code have been there for some time, some many years. Just as one example, last year, this would have changed the result in about between 250 and 300 cases that were ended up where compliance occurred on the first, you know, on the date of the first hearing. But under this ordinance, every one of them would have been fined instead of being dismissed. By the first hearing, you mean the admin court hearing? Yes. Okay. Well, and, and real quick, Chuck, if you don't mind, how, how long, how, how often is admin court in session? Is it weekly? Is it monthly? Twice, twice a month. It could be three times if you include SPD. Okay, but in, in the case of code violations, not. Twice a month. So if someone, someone could theoretically, they could go three weeks without, without abating something. Well, the way this is, the, the first appearance is the first hearing. So what that translates into is that any time that there's a formal referral that goes into court, that whether there's compliance or not, they're going to get fined. That's what this means.
But, but my point being is that we just sent, we just sent a city truck out to clean up a mess in one of my ward blocks. And I know that's happened in, in, in other Aldermen's areas too. And the bottom line is, is that they've already been fined. It's not, they, they've been, I guess that's the cost of, what it costs to clean up. So that's not considered a fine.
There's a, there's a recovery of costs, which could be actually significantly higher than a fine.
But, and, and so my point being is that if, if that situation comes up where there's health, and I guess we're going to look at that at the next one, the next ordinance here because of the solid waste and stuff. If, if it gets to the point where we have to send them out, Darrell has to send his team out to clean up because there's solid waste and there's health issues, that's going to be in addition to the administrative fines that we're going to assess on these folks.
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure because I don't want anybody slipping through the cracks. And it's not, this is not directed at, at, at good landlords. This is directed at the people who are consistently violators and we all got them.
The practical prosecutorial effect of this, just for one moment, just, just for putting that hat on, is that a person who gets a notice from an inspector will have to take that serious because if it gets, end up with a referral, just like if you go to traffic court, you're going to end up with a fine. There's not going to be a dismissal. So I think over time, what's going to end up happening is people will likely learn if you get the notice from the inspector, they will try to comply before it gets referred.
Yeah, because I could tell you, once you take, once you get in their pocket, they start complying. They're not going to comply if they get a slap on the hand. So we got to, this has got to get, we got to be tough.
And mayor, real, with this one point.
Yep, one more and then Alderman Gregory.
This is, this, I want to, I want to make this clear. This isn't just for, for rental units. This is for property.
Absolutely.
Throughout the city, if, it doesn't matter if they rent them out or if they live in them. If there's a, if there's a problem, they're going to get cited and, and it gives them seven days to clean it up, up to seven days to clean it up. It depends, you know, on, on, if it's a, if it's a bad situation, they, they may only give them three or four. I, I don't know.
I miss, Alderman, I misspoke. I wasn't trying to direct this only at renters.
Want to make sure it's clear.
It is, it's for everybody, but I, I, you know, there's a lot of frustration over this whole stuff for all of us.
Stand.
Alderman Gregory.
I just want to speak on this because this is something I definitely deal with all day long. But from my understanding, and Mr. Harris can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but they, they're going to get a little longer than seven days. They, they get about, about a month to, to abate something. But you know, and, and we have provisions within our city code, I do believe, to address public health hazards like, you know, some trash that is, that is, you know, smelly and things of that nature. So those things, we can still get after in 24 hours and get them, get them out of there. And I, and I don't know how that fining works, but I do know that, that we do have a mechanism in play to, to get after it in 24 hours for certain situations. after it in 24 hours for certain situations. And then with the grass and, you know, couches and et cetera, we do try to give them the opportunity to get rid of it and they do get a little time to do it. And I think that's appropriate. I think we got to give people a chance to, to, to get it out of there. Because people do go through different situations. And then at that point, when we see that they, they don't or won't, the, the old gang used to be, we're cleaning up a day before we go to admin court. Now, if, if, if they want them, we have to go there, which we don't like to. Now they're going to get that 150 fine the first time they go to admin court. And then the second time, it's going to be 300 and on and on every time that they make it to admin court. Which, which, you know, it is what it is. It's going to be about 21 to 30 days before they go there. You know, in, in some situations. But I do know we got other mechanisms to really hit them hard. For, for like Chuck, your, your, your issue out there, we, we can get on it. We just need to do it.
Alderman, or Alderwoman Turner?
I, I do think this is a, is a good ordinance and I'm really excited that this come forward because we all have many, many issues as it relates to, to this, to this topic. There's one, I have, and I did talk to Alderman Hanauer about this a little bit earlier. There is a provision in the ordinance that says that if a tenant denies entry, the landlord can be excused from the fine. So I'm not saying that we need to look at removing that now, but I would ask that Public Works keep a registry or a list of, of how often that happens. So we can come back in a year and see if that is an issue. We can then look at maybe amending. And like I said, I did talk to Alderman Hanauer about it earlier today and he, and he agrees. So if Public Works can just monitor that and, and after this has been in effect for a year, if you could let us know how many times that occurred, that would be great.
Sure. Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Hanauer, I brought up the, the concept of being, making this ordinance consistent with the chronic ordinance and making it more restrictive with the 24 months. I'd certainly be willing to, to pull that back and see how the 12-months works and, and if that's your desire. I mean, I wasn't married to it, but I just thought it would be, put it out there for discussion.
I'm, I'm, either way, I, I don't, I, I, it doesn't make any difference to me.
Well, you, you said you wanted to go ahead with the way it's written. Let's just see how it is.
Let's just go with what we have and see how it goes.
Alderman McMenamin, then Alderwoman Turner?
This is a very strong ordinance and it will change the, the response we get from our property owners. And so Ralph, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, especially now that there's no complicating amendments tonight. That, we got to see how this works out. We may have to tweak this down the road and.
Reel them in.
Reel them in, hopefully for a good cause. And as far as, I want to repeat what's been said already tonight about how, because the public is, I think, confused a little bit. They think if there's a first violation, there's an automatic penalty. No. If there's a first violation and you work with our inspectors and you fix the problem and it never goes to hearing, there's no penalty. There's no fine. It's only when we have a lack of cooperation and the repairs not made within a reasonable amount of time and it has to go to the hearing division, that's when there'll be an automatic penalty. So we've just got to make sure the public understands that, that we're giving everyone a, a reasonable amount of time and opportunity to fix problems with this ordinance.
Alderwoman Turner?
I think, well, see, I was jumping in to be supportive of Alderman Donlin and I think he's pulled back on me just that quick.
24 is fine with me. That's, that's what you all want to do.
No, I was just going to say that, you know, when Alderman Proctor raised a really good point with a similar ordinance that he had, that 12 months seems like a long time, but it really goes by very quickly when you're talking about these types of, of offenses. And so when you have the 24 months, it really is a better gauge on the, how often a person offends. So if, if Alderman Donlin would like to make a motion to amend the 12 months to 24 months, I would certainly second that.
Just for, just for you, Alderwoman.
No problem. I'd like to make that motion.
Changing it from 12 months to 24 months?
Yes.
And second it, any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion, our amendment passes. Any further discussion on the ordinance as amended? We do have Carol Needler wanting to speak to this.
Just a clarification on what we just voted for.
Sure.
There's, there's four, there's four amendments in this ordinance. I mean, there's four sections of code. And so, and the 12 months is mentioned in three of those sections. So did we just amend all three of those sections or just one of those sections?
It would be all three.
Yes, point of order.
Yeah, I was going to say, I understood it to mean that wherever the reference to the 12-month limit, we would replace that with 24 months.
Correct. Which is a good, which is a good amendment.
Good, just, good, okay.
That was my intention.
Yep. Is Carol Needler available?
Can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
Hi, I'm Carol Needler. I live at 2016 South Forest Street. I'm a member of the Springfield Icon Steering Committee and a member of their Problem Properties Committee. Thank you, Alderman Hanauer, for speaking out about problem properties and for demanding a solution that holds problem property owners accountable. Problem properties are not just an inner-city issue, they affect all wards. This ordinance holds the promise of addressing many of Icon's concerns about problem properties. There are other city council members, past members and volunteers who work diligently to address chronic problem property issues, and I appreciate their input, expertise and hard work. And I sympathize with their frustration at the lack of progress. Icon has been tracking problem properties and the Public Works Inspection and Administrative Court processes for 10 years. Last year, we crafted additional changes to the city's problem property ordinances with the assistance of an attorney whose input helped ensure that our changes honor due process and are consistent with legal practices. We provided those changes to Alderwoman Erin Conley and we look forward to supporting her proposed ordinance changes in the future. Public Works tells us that the majority of Springfield residents comply quickly once they understand their responsibilities. Icon has been encouraging responsible property ownership with city residents through Nextdoor, through other forums, and with Public Works door hangers in our own neighborhoods. Last year, we created a checklist, Be a Good Neighbor and Tenant, for Springfield Community Relations Workshop for landlords and tenants. However, for the relatively small number of repeat offenders who have a major negative impact, our research clear, clearly shows that it will be imperative to have unwavering and consistent enforcement of this and other nuisance and health ordinances by city legal and administrative law judges. This includes consistent application of fines to deter future problems, especially by chronic offenders with a goal of prevention, not just abating. I ask you to vote for ordinances 2020-232 and also 2020-233. But that's not all. Longstanding problems have led to a culture where it's okay to dump your garbage next to your neighbor's bedroom window and to allow such problems to continue in neighborhoods for years. Fixing such problems is a work in progress. I'm also asking you to make a commitment to improvement by regularly monitoring and reviewing the effort and impact of these and other ordinances. We suggest a quarterly report to answer the question, is the solution working as intended? When codes are enforced and applied consistently, the resulting improvements will change the culture of our city so that living in Springfield will mean having a safe home and a good quality of life for all Springfield residences. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the ordinance as amended? All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll. Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner? Alderman Fulgenzie?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley?
Aye.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
10 ayes and no nays, Mayor. Thank you. The ordinance passes as amended. Next item on the agenda is number 2020-233, an ordinance amending chapter 170, section 170, point 17, point 01B of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to solid waste. Cheryl Lentana motioned to place agenda number 2020-233 on final passage.
Still move?
Second.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
10 ayes and no nays, Mayor. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number 2020-235, an ordinance approving the appointment of Erica Austin to the Housing Policy Advisory Council. Cheryl Lentana motioned to place agenda number 2020-235 on final passage.
Mayor, I make a motion. We, you gotta send this back to committee.
Second.
With the rest of them.
Been moved and second, is sent back to committee. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Cheryl Lentana motioned a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2020-253, an ordinance amending chapter 33, section 33.002 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to boards and commissions.
Still move?
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished, is there another one that I need to add? Or is that it?
That is it.
Okay. Any unfinished business come before the city council? Any new business come before city council? Alderwoman DeSensio, then Alderman Gregory, and Alderwoman Turner?
I'm just going to be very quick with this. We have a speeding problem in the city. It is increasingly worse, especially in older neighborhoods. I hear about it all the time from constituents and, you know, a speed study doesn't do anything. I, I would think this would be a cash cow for the city right now because you could park a car just about anywhere in Ward 6 and find plenty of people speeding. So I would just like to bring that to your attention. We've had problems on Glenwood, we've had problems, problems on state. There's lots of families on these streets, lots of kids running around, and I'm concerned and we, we need to slow down.
Alderman, or Alderman Gregory, and then Alderwoman Turner, then Alderman Hanauer?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to remind everyone, it is, we are having our June Tea Parade this weekend. It is free. Hopefully the weather holds up and looks good. We don't have another downpour like we did last year, but we're working out either way. It is free. It is a new route from Martin Luther King and Capitol across Reconciliation Way or 11th Street as we know it, to, to the state Capitol for a short program. And then as well, after that, that'll start at 10, 10 a.m. And then after that, starting approximately 2 p.m. downtown is Black Restaurant Week, which is another portion of, of June Tea Celebration hosted by the Springfield Black Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Watson and his team has done a fabulous job coordinating that. And I wanted to just, just bring to the light, I sent everybody an email of, of a young lady from Springfield. She won a national contest. And her design for COVID, for the COVID relief, COVID-19 relief efforts was selected by, by Ralph Lowenpolo. And she is, she is here from Springfield, Ms. Ms. Mickey Smith. And, and I just wanted to congratulate her. I'm sure some of the other ladies were, and I'm sorry. But I, I just wanted to make sure that, that I congratulated her, as I have seen that in Facebook. That's, that's a real big deal. So, so again, congratulations.
And the restaurants opened on this weekend. It's Anchors Way, Capital Avenue, Boyd's, New Generation Family Style Restaurant, South Grand, Jerk Shop Go on Fifth Street, MJ Fish and Chicken Express on Enos, Ms. D's Kitchen and Grill on 11th Street, Nikki's Southern Style Kitchen on South Grand, and PT's Barbecue on Martin Luther King and South Grand. Yeah, congratulations Nikki Smith. That's a great honor with regards to that national recognition. So thank you. Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, to go.
I'm sorry, was it Alderwoman, Alderwoman Turner first, then Alderman Hanauer, if my memory serves.
Go ahead, because really mine is new business. So, that's okay.
To go along with, with Alderwoman DeSensio's, the city also has a very bad, bad situation going on with people running red lights, as my colleague here knows. We, I know we can't do red light cameras because the state won't allow, but I'll tell you what, if, if we could, I'd bring them up for a vote right now because people do not stop at red lights in this town. It's, it's, I've seen it too many times, whereas if, if you're starting to pull out and you see some, someone coming. And I don't know what, what can be done because we can't have a police officer at every red light, or at every light. But it's bad. And, and just, I would, it'd be interesting to see the number of accidents that have, that have occurred because of people running the light. And I've seen it out on, I've seen it all over town. It's not just, not just the highways, it's, it's all over town. So I, I'm just going to bring that up and, you know, not much we can do about it.
Well, we'll bring it to the chief's attention and then, I don't know if synchronizing lights would help or not, but there'll be some, I know Nate Bottom's working on that type of project throughout the city. Any new business come before the council? Alderwoman Turner?
Okay, um, so, so we all know that, that Springfield was a real pioneer with regard to the way that we went about with our legalization of recreational, recreational cannabis. There are a number of cities in, in the state that are, that look to us for guidance as they set about doing what we've already done. And when I talked about that, I always talked about the fact that when Governor Pritzker set about to legalize recreational cannabis, he really fashioned it around criminal justice reform as well with his Illinois Criminal Justice Restore, Re-Event and Renew Program. So I know that with, in, with regard to what has been happening around the nation and in Springfield over the last few weeks, I have been doing a lot of research about what we can do as a city with regard to community investment. And I call it community investment because I don't know that we can say reinvestment because I don't know that there's been a lot of investment to reinvest on. So I know that was just an aside, sorry. So I did, in, in my research, the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Restore, Reinvest and Renew Program has a, has a, a grant program that I really think that Springfield could benefit from, especially working in collaboration with what Alderman Gregory and I are trying to do with community investment. So the, the, the grant program has, is two different areas. One of them is a service delivery grant. And there are five program areas, but the ones that I think really would be of interest to us are economic development, violence prevention and youth development, things that we talk about all the time, but we always say that we don't have money to do any of these things. So this is a real opportunity. And the, the grant amounts are between 25,000 and just a little over $700,000. So the other, the other one is an assessment and planning grant. And I know people talk about, well, we assess and we plan all the time. But I think that this is an opportunity to assess and plan with an eye to really doing something with the plan once we, once we have one to work with. And we already know where we want to go. We just really need some financial support to help, help get us there. And again, there are five different areas, but I think the area that really speaks to what we want to do here is violence prevention and youth development. And the amount available for that is 25,000 to a little over $80,000. And the reason why I bring this up tonight under new business is because it's very timely, that the notice of intent has to be filed by July 5th, which is just a little over a month. And so I would ask the mayor if I can work with Director Yezel to put together a letter of intent and we see where we can go with this. I just think that we are at a tipping point in our community and we cannot allow this time in our history to pass without making some real attempt at change. And one of the ways that we do that is, is I know that when we look at what we need to do around law enforcement, that's one piece of it, but that's only one piece of it. And community investment is a significant, significant piece of it. Because if we set about investing in our communities, a lot of the issues that we have that are companion to law enforcement are mitigated. So I, I think that this is the real opportunity. Again, Governor Pritzker showed a lot of forethought when he set about the, the recreational cannabis legislation. This is a tangible result of that that will benefit our community in a real, in a real way. So, Mayor, can I do that? Can I work with Director Yezel and we see what we can, where we can go with it?
Yeah, actually, we'll do one better. You can work with myself and Alderman Gregory because as we've all known, that's one of the priority areas, core areas. And what we need to do is connect our resources economically. I know there's a lot of interest and this proves the importance of the TIF, which we've taken action upon. We've had conversations with regards to dilapidated properties. Actually, Darrell Harris is looking at the properties that we could obtain and save them instead of having them demolished, try to save the character of the neighborhoods. So that's one aspect of the development, you know, partnering with entity that Alderman Gregory's been working with, Pastor Dos, as well as Calvin Pitts on the Training Center on South Grand and providing that workforce training through not only classroom, but hands-on by restoring properties. So that grant will help provide those resources as well as the tip. But the other area that we've known as problem properties is, well, Comer Cox Park. And that is ripe for youth development as you brought up. And that is ripe for youth development, as you brought up, right in there in that whole area. When you talk about hubs or innovation areas, that should be the one that we zero in on because especially for the young people, you know, we have the Boys and Girls Club as one anchor. And then on the other side, you have the Gold's Gym Salvation Army Community Center. But you have this vast property. Unfortunately, it's not in our jurisdiction. We used to own it. Comer Cox Park as well as Chamberlain, but that whole area is ripe for development. So we'll take a look at that piece as far as, and then also, you know, the TSB Hope Plan that's been on the shelf for ages and how do we, you know, use dollars to bring that, update that plan and put it to use. But by all means, all of us working together, that's what it's going to take. And it's just not government, as you know. It's going to take the private sector for investment because I think it's with the opportunity zones, which include not only the east side, but near north side as well. But there's just a lot of work, as you said, to be done. And now we have this window of opportunity that we have to take full advantage of, so there'll be a high priority for us.
So we can put in a notice of intent to apply, right?
Oh, we're going to do it, no doubt about it, in many different facets, right? But I think the whole thing is, I think it should be, and we'll actually print it out. I'm going to read it in detail, but there's so many facets. And I think where, what hurts us at times is being disjointed. We really need to, I think, an umbrella approach, an all-encompassing approach, even if it's phased in. But it's important that we move in that direction to really change the lives of our young people and others right there, right now. So Alderman Gregory?
I'm excited, I'm excited, I'm excited. Let's get this letter done. Let's do it.
Well, that's, that's the easy part. Alderman Gregory? Do you have any comments, Alderman Gregory?
No, I'm just excited to, you know, to address the changes that we need from every angle, like Alderman Turner was saying and frequent conversations with Alderman DeSensos and Conley, just about, you know, bouncing ideas on how we really attack true change. I've talked to you as well and Chief, and you know, I'm just excited and, you know, I want us to keep acting and keep taking those steps and put action behind our words. And I think we're all committed to doing that and I'm excited to be a part of it, so I appreciate you guys.
Okay, so just so, and I don't want to mean to take up everybody's time to delve into this right now. So, so the letter of intent and the application is going to be written by the mayor's office? So not Office of Economic?
We'll coordinate it, of course, the grant writers, the notepad, but we will coordinate that because it's multifaceted. Actually, we've asked for some private entities to help with the initiative as well, write the grant, especially when we're talking about LED lighting and how do we move to smart city status. So that's a different dynamic altogether because it speaks to the safety aspect. The other one is with regards to planning, things of that nature. So there's, it's multifaceted, so it's going to, it's going to be a group effort that goes beyond the city. You know, we'll have to have others involved with that process. But by all means, yeah, the letters of intent would be helpful.
Yep, well, okay, I just don't want us to get, I just don't want us to lose this now because I know that we're thinking big and we're thinking outside the box. But I think that we have a very small window of opportunity, so we need to utilize the, you know, we need to do what we can.
And I'll just point it out, I agree, because this is kind of frustrating on the reason this is near and dear to my heart because of the priority. I know we had a grant opportunity for a road project and unfortunately, they didn't put the road project on the east side that I wanted to put forward first. It was a different one and, but that's been, fortunately, there's another road opportunity at the end of the month. And so it's for the kind of modernizing, not to the full content, but as much as what we could do for those roads that needed it for a long time. So that's, you really have to have that priority preference and that's what we intend to do. You know, all of us here around the horseshoe understand the significance of the governing magazine. And, you know, we were ranked number one post-pandemic, which was great for a number of reasons. One is because of the governor's proactive measures with the coronavirus. I think, you know, Spring, Illinois, rather, is decreasing faster than the other states. That's why it's important we all stay vigilant with regards to our safety precautions. But the other side of it, it was just more than that. It was the affordability of Springfield. It was about our ability to work remotely, you know, our diversity with regards to job opportunities, things of that nature. So we have so much more to build upon and that's what's incumbent upon all of us to really bring it all together, integrate it as much as possible so we all can move forward and maximize our resources. Alderwoman DeSensos?
I support everything that Alderwoman Turner has said. I just want to make sure that, you know, as we talk about words two and words three, we always put them in this box. And if there's anything we've learned in the last few weeks is that we are your allies. We are here. We are, you know, wanting to make the change with you. So whatever we can do to help, please don't forget that we are here to back you up. And, you know, if we're, if we're going to change Springfield and if we're going to change the way things work around here and around the world, then we all need to stand up together and say, we're going to do this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good to hear because we'll have a resolution coming forward, I think, with some action items on it. And that's so true. It has to be, everybody's buying because it is a community-wide effort to improve all areas of our community, especially with the inner city and move forward in that direction. So thank you very much. Any other new business?
Let's not forget Father's Day this Sunday for the fathers, grandfathers and great-grandfathers out there.
Yep, thank you very much.
Happy Father's Day, everybody.
Thank you.
There's a couple of other announcements. There's a donation drive Saturday, June 20th, from noon to 3:00. Coral is hosting a donation drive at the Church of the Brethren, 2115 Yale Boulevard. Donations will be, will benefit Central Illinois Food Bank, the Phoenix Center and Fifth Street Renaissance Sarah Center. For more information being collected, you can visit their Facebook, Springfield Coral. And then United Way Day of Action, that's this week, United Way's Day of Action. Due to the coronavirus, they usually had people go out in groups, but there's a special virtual event and they have various activities that you can do at home or from your desk. So if you visit Springfield, I'm sorry, www.springfieldunitedway.org for more details. And then tomorrow's Facebook Live will feature Ward 1 Alderman Chuck Repath and Ward 3 Alderwoman Doris Turner, takes place at noon on the city's Facebook page. And then just as a reminder, the census is continuing. We ask that everybody take time to fill out their census form and please promote it to others as much as possible. Whether you own or rent your house, make sure that you count, everyone does because really it impacts the proceeds we receive from the federal government as well as our representation up in Washington. So it's important that we all participate. And right now Springfield's at 66.5% of the population who's responded. So we'd like to hit that 70-plus mark if we could. Alderman Hanauer, you have anything? How is it with the Plexiglas? You look farther away. How is it?
It's, he's in isolation.
It's interesting. It's definitely interesting.
He's in a penalty box.
So we'll have those up for everybody, I think, at the end of the month because July we'll be able to all come back, who's able to anyway. So into the council chambers as we move into the phase four. So any other new business or any other discussion?
We should adjourn.
No, we got it.
Is there anybody signed up to speak? Tom, Chi, is anybody there to speak?
Yes, we've, two people signed up to speak. We have Randall Lewis.
Okay. If you'd join us and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Randy Lewis. I live at 1518 East Adams, Springfield, Illinois. I would like to thank the mayor and all the alderwomen and aldermen for letting me speak at this time.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, my concerns was over the weekend. I live across the street from Comer Cox Park. I think the police officers dropped the ball on this weekend because the simple fact of it is when everything was kicking off, I kept on asking them. I said, where is your help? They kept on responding to me the whole weekend. Call your alderman. I said, what does my alderman have to do with 600 people in the park? They said, well, from your alderman and from our commander, we were told to stand down. And also, from several conversations I had with the police, that they said that they knew about this block party so-called this weekend because they got a flyer, they had a flyer. And they said it was from 10 until. I said, from 10 until when? 10 in the morning or 10 in the evening? Because if it's at 10 in the evening, you guys should have stopped it from when you first seen the flyer, you know? And that doesn't make sense for no one over here, that we all been here for over 30 years, homeowners, to have to stand in our driveway and stop four-wheelers and stop people from driving through our yards at 3 or 4 o'clock in the morning. And when this kicked off, it was surreal. Really, really was because when you see 500 or 600 people out in front of your house and it's 3 o'clock in the morning, I don't, I don't know what to say about that. And I just think that the police dropped the ball on this because when they tell you that they knew about it and then they kept on saying, Alderman, call your alderman. First of all, they didn't understand or didn't even know that Alderman Gregory, when we woke up Saturday morning, was out there by himself picking up garbage. And we all went out there and he had some other people with him, helping him. Also, he had a member of the park district helping him. That's uncalled for. That is uncalled for. That should be embarrassing to the city of Springfield for your police department to sit there and say, call your alderman. And our commander told us to stand down. They only allocated three people for over here at this park tonight. Come on now, that's not, that's not real.
Yeah, as far as, I can't speak to the directive. I know we met Chief Winslow, myself and Alderwoman Turner and Gregory met to discuss this very issue. And so we, the chief has had conversation with the park district to get additional help. So we are putting, there will be more this weekend. But most importantly is how do we go forward in the future with, to address the other remedies? I mean, there's, there's issues with some of the convenience stores. I mean, you know, God forbid, we had the young man that got gunned down on 11th and Laurel. You know, that's, I grew up on 1700, right there on the corner of Laurel and Whittier. So it's, you know, we have to take a deep dive into preventative measures. I've talked to the mayor of Decatur. They have, you know, similar issues, not to the size that we have. But they've had significant issues related to that. So when you have individuals that number, you have to get it on the forefront. And I know Chief Winslow's looking at how we can do that and move forward in that direction. But this is, you know, we're just at the start of summer. And that's what we intend to do is try to come up with a process and try to come up with preventable, preventable measures. But it's going to be, you know, something that's ongoing and how do we make sure that we protect the public as much as possible in those situations? So I don't know if Alderman Gregory or Alderwoman Turner have anything to add to that?
Sure, Mr. Lewis, I thank you for your time and I thank you for all your help over the weekend. I definitely hear your concerns and the concerns of the community. And I can assure you that if it was a case to call me, I appreciate you calling me and I can promise you that we have set out with our chief and, and come up with the game plan for this weekend. And, you know, I do agree with the mayor. We do have some other things to address to sort of help, help this out and help our officers out. You know, I stand for peace in our community and justice in our community regardless of, you know, things that go on. So I just want to encourage everybody to make sure that we're responsible. And, you know, I'm going to do my part on the community. I'm going to try to be, continue to be a positive influence to our young people. I get it. I've been there. And we're going to help them be safe and encourage everybody just to stay home and then not do those things in our community. So we'll work hard at it. I'm going to work hard at it, Mr. Lewis. And, you know, I'd be, I'd be to see you guys soon. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory, I'd like to appreciate, I want to let you know that I appreciate you and your support that you have given over here, not only in this area, but for War II. But it was just grave concerns for all of us over here. We spoke to you. And that when you seen how, you wasn't here, but I stood out in my front yard Friday night and Saturday night, six hours pleading with my neighbors for more help. Because everybody knows that the park closes at a certain time, you know? And I asked the police officer, again, he also kept on saying that the park police don't have, don't have nothing to do with this. And I said, well, let me tell you something, man. They get ready to start fighting over here because you can hear. You can stand in my yard and hear everything. And those who know where I live at can surely say, I know Randy heard it. But then soon as everything kicked off and they started shooting, because my concern was to the police officer, man, what are you going to do if something break out? By that time, the shooting started and it was probably 100 yards from me and I was in my front yard. The police officer, both of us took off running. My God, next thing you know, you know, I ran to my house. My lady was with me. She fell on the ground. I turned around, my heart dropped to my feet because I thought she had got shot, you know? And I'm asking her, are you hit? She says, no, I'm all right. Do you, we don't have to live like that over here. We don't, we do not have to live like that over here. And I appreciate you aldermen, I appreciate all the women, the aldermen, getting behind this young man and getting behind the city of Springfield. I hope that the police department shows some better judgment this weekend coming up. But this is, this will be the fifth weekend. What about the previous four? So I hope this is all together now. I hate to see this happen again. But, you know, you can't just live like this. And you can't have your police officer, the ones that's supposed to protect and serve, tell you over and over again, call your alderman. Because like I told him, there's nothing Sean can do with 600 people by himself. So I'm just disappointed, disgusted, but I also am willing to work for everyone to see that this problem doesn't happen again. And I appreciate you guys letting me talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Turner.
So, so I just want to say, Randy, I hear you and I understand what you're saying. And I know it's no consolation, but I have a similar situation in War III. So it's in various places throughout the city and it's unfortunate because it does lead to not only property damage, but it leads to loss of life and, and, and people getting, getting hurt, you know, and things that you can't come back from. You know, you just can't come back from it. So I do want to say though that it's definitely not accurate that Alderman Gregory or myself ever said to anyone, a law enforcement officer or anyone else, that we are condone those, that activity. We certainly never said that. We certainly never said that we approve of it. We certainly never said that we didn't want law enforcement to address it. That was never, ever said. Both of us are, you know, ten toes down that it's inappropriate and we're going to do everything that we can to stop it and get it under, get it under control. So having said that, we did have what I thought was a very productive meeting on Monday with Alderman Gregory, myself, Chief Winslow and the mayor, and also Corporation Council Zirkel. And I say Corporation Council Zirkel because it was the situation where we, I feel like we were able to ask, ask that some real things happen in real time. And Corporation Council was there to say, you know, I'm going to look into it and I will get back to you. And he did, he got back to me with some answers on some things today. So we are working very diligently to have some things in place by this weekend. We're talking about by Thursday so that, you know, we are trying to address it as best we can. So we hear you, we hear your neighbors, we hear the cries of the neighbors on 25th Street and Manor. And we are doing everything that we can to address it. I also want to say that, you know, while we want to say that, you know, while we have to hold residents accountable, we also have to hold these businesses accountable too. Because we, we can't give them a pass and allow them to have, now, the situation that happened at Comer Cox Park, that's, that's one thing. But we also have these situations where people, where businesses allow people, you know, 200 and 300 people to conjugate on their property. And we can't, you know, we have to get a handle on, on that as well. And there's no reason for, you know, the situation that happened at Seven Brothers, there's no reason for a convenience store to be open 3, 4, 6 o'clock in the morning. There's just no reason for that. So we're working very diligently to not only put some things in place to hold residents accountable, we're also working to put some things in place to hold businesses and business owners accountable as well.
I appreciate you. Thank you very much, Alder, Alderman.
I think Chief Winslow's available to state something.
Can, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Mr. Lewis, first off, I want to thank you for coming out today, and I understand the concerns you have, and we express those same concerns. This is something we've been dealing with off and on for the last six weeks. They continue to get bigger and bigger through social media at multiple locations. I don't know what the officer said, I won't tell you. I'm taking your word in what he said about standing down. We have had our conversations with the officers. If there's 1,000 people or so, you can't go in three or four deep when you only got 20 officers for the whole streets, or 25 officers for the entire streets. And we're dealing with these all across the city plus additional issues. And you shouldn't have to live like that, and neither should any of the citizens over there. And we are working diligently, as the Alderwoman and the Alderman said, about trying to get a plan together. We know we're going to move it. We know we'll move it, but it's going to be in somebody else's neighborhood. What we really need here is, we need the citizens of Springfield to come forward and tell our young people that even though we know there's a pandemic going along, on right now, and there's no place to go, that there's no clubs open, there's no place to go, that going to the park and going into residential neighborhoods and throwing these types of parties that usually turn violent is not an option. We cannot do that. And we have to stop that throughout our entire community. And the police department cannot do that alone. I could bring 100 officers in this weekend, and we're still going to have this issue somewhere in our community. And we're going to do that. We're going to have plenty of manpower out there, and we're going to be taking people to jail. And that's not what we want to do. We don't want to be arresting people. We don't want to be out there, you know, giving people a bunch of citations, because we know they're, they're tired. We understand they want something to do. But this is not an option. And we agree with you 100%. What I'm going to ask from you, as well as those neighbors around there, we're going to need your assistance. Some of the things we've already talked about, I've had conversations with Alderman Gregory, Alderman Turner, people will be reaching out to your neighborhood right there. Some of the things we're going to do are going to be an inconvenience to you in order to keep people out of that neighborhood. We ask for you to work with us. We'll be reaching out to you probably tomorrow and discuss some of these options, as well as the other neighbors in that area. But we're going to need your assistance on this in order to make this successful. Additionally, the park police, we have talked to them, because Comer Cox does fall in the park jurisdiction. They are going to be out there with us. They have dedicated some manpower to help us on this. But again, this cannot be just a law enforcement issue. This is a community problem that's been going on for 25 years, and it's only grown bigger and bigger because of the advent of social media. Because as soon as we go to one area and shut it down, they're already on social media saying where the next location they're going to. So we know that's what's going to happen this weekend. We're going to do our best to control it to the best of our ability. What we really need here is the community to step up together and talk to, the people out there typically anywhere from 17 to 30. We need the help of our young people here, and those who are influential in our community to help us say, this is unacceptable. This isn't good. So thank you, and I apologize for what you had to go through this weekend.
Thank you, Chief. And also, I would like to say that I would never say nothing that, or repeat anything that was untrue or I didn't hear. So, and I questioned that officer twice, and I said, what do you mean by stand down? He said, well, my commanding officer and the alderman said they didn't want nobody to get, to intervene. And I said, are you serious? And, and that was told to me all weekend. So I think that I'm not blaming the officers, because I spoke to them, and I watched it in their face. They were, they were disgusted. Some of them felt very uncomfortable, and I don't blame them. But, and they were outnumbered. But if we were to stop this, when that young lady officer told me that she knew before this happened, I can't understand. And please, somebody tell me, if you knew this was going to happen, and you see a flyer that says 10 o'clock in the evening, why wasn't you prepared?
Well, like I said, we did have heads up on it. We gave that information to the park police as well, to share that information. We did have officers out there. The bottom line is that, you know, we've got to do better there. You know, you're right. The problem is we have to get out there before they get out there. And, but we also have regular calls for service we have to handle as well. We will do better this weekend, and we will try to go forward. And as far as what the officer said, I can't, you know, that's something we're going to look into, because that wasn't an appropriate question, you know, or answer to you. You know, the, the answer should have been something to the effect that, like I said, it may be a breakdown in the communication between the supervisors, I don't know. But the, you know, the concerns that we're having right now is that, again, you're not going to send four or five officers into a group once it gets that big. Obviously, if you can get in there when there's only 25, 30, that's what you got to do. You can't be waiting until it's 6, 700 deep to try to go in there with four or five officers, especially with all the tension that's going on in our community right now and across the nation with law enforcement. So, again, we appreciate the community support, we appreciate the council's support, and we will do better this weekend.
Right. One thing, one more thing I'm going to say is, speaking about this COVID, if you had 600 kids out there, and I've seen 600, and I could say every one of them was masked, didn't have a mask on. So then they go home to their parents' house, to their grandparents' house, we don't have a chance. We don't, we don't want to tell our kids, our grandkids, don't come over, you know? But I, I'm, I'm not going to just keep on repeating myself. I appreciate the police department, I appreciate you, Chief, I appreciate all the alderwomen, I appreciate all the aldermen, I appreciate the mayor. But we as a community, we have to keep our feet ten toes down, like, like Ms. Alderwoman Turner said, and we can go from there.
I agree 100%. Thank you, sir.
That's a good point about the coronavirus, and, you know, we need to try to educate them somehow. I mean, that's, that's something they don't think about. But that's something we have to try to make known. But as Chief said, we do, we did discuss it with the Alderwoman Turner and Alderman Gregory, and will be a different situation this weekend.
Well, I appreciate everyone for letting me speak, and I understand that you guys' hands are full. So you have my support, and I'm pretty sure everybody over here's support.
Before you go, who did the Rosa Parks drawing behind you?
John Crisp.
Oh, he's good. Yep.
Yes, he is. All my art, my house is from John Crisp.
Yep. Well, thank you very much.
I appreciate you. I appreciate everyone for listening.
You too.
All right. Thanks. Bye-bye.
All right, Louis. All right, now.
And then there's one more, you said, Tom? Tom Chi? Is there someone else?
Yep, Anna Lee, but she did not join, and also Alice Ramey, and she did not join as well.
She's probably waiting until she can come in person. So, any other discussion? Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Second? Say aye? Close, say nay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Happy Father's Day, everybody.
Thank you.